Okay, let's call this meeting into order. Please rise for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add or alter on the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Support it.
Moved and supported to approve the agenda as submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of Tuesday, March 11th.
I make a motion to approve the regular meeting of Tuesday, March 11th, 2014.
Support it. Moved and supported to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of Tuesday, March 11th, 2014. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is the financial report. Colleen, would you do it?
We began the month with $310,473.85. We took in receipts of $65,013.36. And we made dispersments in the amount of $27,448.44, leaving us with an ending balance in the general fund of $348,036.74.
Would you like to make a motion to approve the financial report as submitted?
Support it.
Moved and supported to approve the financial report as submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is correspondence, item A's, communication from the St. Clair County landfill. It's kind of what they said a couple of months ago. They are still working with the county commissioners, but they anticipate there's going to be a rate in the tipping fees at the landfill. And it will roughly break down to eight dollars a year per household. So, it may be a little more, a little less, depends on who's picking up your trash. But I'm sure it's gonna go through because they need the money.
It's been a while since they raised the tipping fees.
Yeah, they said at the meeting. I don't have it in front of me, but it's been quite a while.
Yeah.
And they're bringing in way less material. So, it's a stressing amount on the money. Okay, next item. Unless there's any questions on the landfill, we'll move on to item B. It's a communication from DTE. And this has been coming for a couple of years. They're still in the process of putting the new meters on in their system that they can read without actually walking up to your house. Says they're putting out 10,000 meters a week and they'll... They'll be here in our community, but it doesn't give a timeline. If you've been following this at all, the Public Service Commission, after a big fight, said that if you're a DTE customer and you want to opt out of this, you can. But it's gonna cost you $67.20 to opt out and $9.80 a month.
Why do people want to opt out?
The same reason they want to opt out of having their houses assessed. They just don't want people on their property. That's the only reason I can think of.
Well, you're after to do that, I guess, than doing it from the road.
Yeah.
Well, they don't want the automated stuff, I guess. They're afraid because it's automated, electronic, they can play with something and maybe give you inaccurate reads or makes some money off.
Like they haven't done that.
But the gas company already does that.
There you go.
You go out and read your own meter, so. I think the cost is high enough. There's not gonna be many people opting out of that program.
And I take it then everybody in the township is only beginning of this letter from DTE.
Well, they'll probably get it with their bill.
And then they'll read it.
When they get closer to the time, well, they'll figure it out when they come in their yard.
Yeah, I bet they'll have like an app where you, wherever you're at, you could see where, how much power your house is using from your iPhone.
Well, you know, that's a good thing.
I wouldn't be surprised, but you...
Okay. Moving on. Number two, old business. One item on road business. That is the Ratty consent agreement. I put the entire agreement in your packet. And I asked our attorney to draw up what he would like to see in the motion tonight so we can move ahead. And basically I outlined in the update. If you make this motion or something similar to it, we'll then file a suit against Mr. and Mrs. Ratty to have the judge give a consent judgment to the agreement we've ironed out with them. They have approved the language that's included in your packet. But by going to the judge, it'll make it a formal, it'll let both sides have to live up to the agreement or possibly be penalized.
Okay.
All right, I guess I...
Just we don't have to.
You can feel free to do what you want to, but I just put those words in there in case you wanted to.
But this is, the Ratties, they're in agreement with this. This is just, just the lone strangest motion to solve this.
Well, this is approving the consent judgment and authorizing the attorney to take it to court where the attorney and myself would be signatories when it gets to that point.
Seems pretty young in the class.
Yeah, it does. It just...
Tried to cover all the bases, so.
I make, okay, you now make a motion. Or you, Joe.
No, you go ahead.
I make a motion to authorize Township Legal Counsel to file a lawsuit in St. Clair County Circuit Court against Ted Ratty and Rosalie Ratty to resolve swimming issues and to authorize the Township Supervisor and Legal Counsel to sign the proposed consent judgment which has been negotiated with and approved by the Ratties and their attorney.
Sign the motion.
Okay, moved and supported. And any discussion? Hopefully this'll work out well. The Ratties are very nice to work with. They're good people. But it was just an issue that you couldn't let go forever.
Absolutely.
Okay, hearing no other discussion, we have roll call vote, please.
Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Pat, yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. On the new business, item A, received a communication from the city of St. Clair. Kind of illustrating the programs they have over there with their pool and they do offer a beginner's instruction course to teach you how to swim. And if you're a resident of the city, the total fee is $60, but if you're a resident of St. Clair, it's $40. So, they asked us if we would like to participate, so if anybody living in Casco Township would like to participate in the instruction class, if we would pick up that $20 surcharge, lowering it to $40. I don't believe there's gonna be much demand. The only money we spend out of Park and Rec so far has been for the odd. I'd be shocked if more than five people sign up for this because two of the districts in our township have swimming in schools. So, it's a limited number of people. And I would encourage the board to give it a try for a year.
No, I don't think so.
Well, you're telling your opinion, so it's okay.
Yeah, I'm totally against it. Anch Bay's got a school, pool, Marine City's got a pool, Richmond, there's three pools. Why should we give it to St. Clair?
And also, it doesn't seem like it needs a subsidy. I mean, if they wanted to do it, they could do it.
They can do it. I mean, my mom paid for swimming lessons.
I'd like to hear Bill's reason to support it.
Well, I guess other than the odd, our Park and Recs program has really done nothing for anybody in Casco yet, up to this point. Realistically, I anticipate maybe two people will take advantage of this. But they'll get something out of the Park and Recs. It's a very small amount of money. And we'll see what happens. If nobody signs up, it costs us nothing. If there's a flood of people, it's a one-year deal. And you can put a cap on of 100, 200, whatever you want to do. I don't think it's an unreasonable amount. I think the city is obligated to give a discount to the people that pay the city taxes because they're considerable. It's true that two of the schools have programs. The other one doesn't.
Which school does it?
Richmond.
They have a community pool.
That's the city of Richmond, and I don't know what the rates are. I didn't check.
Yeah, and they're only open season.
And, but not everybody that lives here went to those three school districts. So, I thought, hey, small amount of money might help a couple of people. I thought it was worth a shot. But if the majority of the board doesn't want to get involved, that's fine with me.
I'm just not sure why we would subsidize swimming lessons. I'm just not... I mean, the odd is, the odd is a whole set of large number of programs that, you know, that help kids and that keep them occupied and train them and give them education. But swimming lessons, I'm not so sure why we would subsidize that from our Parks and Rec fund.
I don't know. I think it's a recreation use, same as the odd. I have no problem with it.
We also have people, I know of a couple of women that go from, did a bunch of the kids gather at her swimming pool and she gives swimming lessons for free. I taught my kids how to swim.
I just told my kids, don't go near the water.
I just... I mean, we live in a water-based place. You know, if somebody from Casco wants to get swimming lessons, you know, they can go to Marine City, go to the high school.
How much does Marine City charge?
I don't think it's very much.
Well, you have to take swimming. There is a, not only is there swimming lessons required in Marine City, there is boater safety.
That's given through junior high and high school.
Even people like us in Casco who go to Marine City schools and we're never going near water, they had to take boater safety. I don't mind because as Bill says, I think there's gonna be maybe three people that sign up for this. I really don't. I, St. Clair, or Richmond has outdoor swimming and they have swimming lessons of their own. They don't have a pool in the high school. If, he's right, if five people signed up for this, I would be shocked. It would be just more of a goodwill gesture on our part. I don't know who's going... I'm surprised at the sentence that says that we have successfully had this partnership with St. Clair Township for the last two years because St. Clair Township would have its kind of schools and they would have swimming lessons at the high school level. But, you know, if someone wants to take it for a year, you know, I...
Yeah, I can see a couple positives with very little cost. And you may have noticed in the paper, they're talking about getting some road funding to townships. And they have never done that before. They've always given it to cities and villages. And the reason was because the cities and villages interact, not only do they have their own streets, they own their own streets, but interactive services. And I don't know if you could really classify this as an interactive agreement.
This is...
Yeah, but it's on that.
I know this larger community interaction, I'm sorry, Brad.
That's okay.
The larger community interaction has apparently been a major driver for grants and so on. And if this puts our, us out there, so to speak, as willing to do that and having done that, I think that that's something we should be doing.
And if it's gonna cost us, you know, realistically, $60 a year, when the time comes and we apply for grants, I think that would be a positive.
This is a one-year?
I agree with...
I would like the motion for one year, see how it works out. It would be a yearly, year-to-year partnership.
But maybe we should also, besides doing this, look at other ways of interacting. I mean, parking lots and other things like that.
Yeah, you know.
We should probably try to...
Okay, I'd like, okay, I'll make the motion. I'd like to make a motion that we approve for a period of one year, the City of St. Clair Partnership Program for Water Safety.
I'll support.
Are you gonna put a cap on the amount or not? No? Okay.
I don't think that's necessary.
I don't think it is either.
Could you give me that again?
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the City of St. Clair Partnership Program for Water Safety. For a period of, for a period of one year. No cap on it.
No monetary cap.
Yeah.
Okay.
Should I specify out of the Parks and Recs one?
Yes.
Yeah, out of the Parks and, Casco Township Parks and Recs one.
There aren't a lot of ponds in Casco.
There are.
Thank you. We haven't had a ground in a long while.
Okay, moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I think this is a Parks and Rec issue, just the same as us, giving them up to the odd. So, I think, and it's a good thing. It's teaching water safety and that, so it's a good thing.
Okay, what do they do in Memphis? Need to swim in the river?
No. Yeah, I think they go down to Richmond and use their pool, usually, yeah.
Oh, they'll, up at the port here, and y'all, those up there, every child under the age, I think, 14, under, has to wear a life vest at all times.
Good, good.
While on the property. Because it's just, you never know. They even, when I went there, they even offered me one. They says it's no, you know...
You weren't so young, Joe.
Well, no, it's just...
Yeah.
Not everybody, you're right. Wouldn't float.
And I think that's a smart thing because water will kill you quicker than most anything.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, we have a roll call vote. This can be paid.
It's not, it's not that much money.
Okay, we'll just have a regular vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining?
Nay.
Okay. Everybody else was aye?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on. And you had a new 3B in front of you on the table.
Yes.
Because we missed one little thing we had to add.
Okay, the 3B and Red.
Red, yep, absolutely. These are the final budget adjustments for the fiscal year 2013, 2014. There's nothing gigantic. There's a little bit involved and some of that was with the, I think, the maintenance agreement for the computers was paid before the first April, which is okay. And as you can see, the one that was added on the bottom is only for a dollar and a half. But we need to get these done. The couple of, the electrical inspector, we had more inspections. Well, more than we budgeted. There's revenue to correspond with that, but it doesn't reflect in the expenditure portion. That's about it. So, we would need a motion to make these amendments. You want to leave these amendments hanging?
Oh, sorry.
Because we want to put them in the minutes, you want to read them right there?
Do you, oh, yeah, I'll read them for you. From the general fund, the expenditures would be account 101, 101, 706 for election workers, amendment of $592. You can all hit the right down. I'm just gonna give it to you. Electrical inspector, which is account 101, 371, 822, would be $665 for our building, buildings. Okay, I got the wrong account there for the building. It should be 101. 101, 101, I mean, 371, 860. I got the wrong count.
It says building mileage.
Mileage, that's what I meant. What did I say? Building mileage, it would be $93. And the account would, again, would be 101, 371, 860. Not mileage, it's mileage, okay. Publishing, 101, 101, 900, would be $268.45 for contracted maintenance, it'd be 101, 101, 930, it would be 2,288.65. And for hall and office maintenance, it'd be 101, 265, 930, $634.35, which comes to a total of $5,241.45, which will, again, be taken out of our attorney fees, account 101, 101, 826. Then in our liquor fund, the supplies we bought was checks and they went up a dollar fifty. And that will come out of account, it'll be account 2, 12, 101, 726. And it will be taken, will be taken out of miscellaneous. 2, 12, 101, 956. Any questions?
No, I make a motion the budget amendments be approved.
Support it. Moved and supported to approve the budget amendments as outlined. Any discussion? Now, along with that, we also sent you the last budget of the year, so. You all got a chance to look that over? Is it all right? Any questions on that?
Nope, should've called you at work. I says, you want bare basic government. This is it, there, pal.
Very basic, right there.
Okay, this time we have a roll call vote, please.
Okay, roll call. Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Me, yes. Joe?
Yes.
And Dan?
Motion carries. Item C. Homeland Security Meeting Compensation. A few months ago, we appointed Wayne Baumgartner as our Homeland Security Representative. He had already gone to several meetings without getting paid. And that's not really fair, to not get anything because the meetings are not close after going to the airport. So, I was recommending, I kind of talked to Joe with Wayne, and he probably wants more, but that's a tough life. I would recommend the same as when he gets an NEMC, the $30 meeting, just a flat fee. If you're so inclined to make the motion, include, there was a meeting, was it last week?
28th it was.
It was a meeting on 28th, that's already the last meeting they had. If you could include that in the motion also, that would be compensated at that rate.
Really?
Yeah, really. I think that's...
How often are these meetings, though? You have one...
You might not have one now for who knows when.
For a couple of months. So, if they're not regular, they're just whenever they feel...
Yeah, whenever Nikki gets something together.
Well, first it was training, then he got his radio. And then the last one, he got certified, right?
Well, yeah, for the Michigan CIMS security site.
So, unless something comes up, I don't know. I mean, I can't predict Homeland Security, but I would doubt there'd be more than four a year.
Okay. I make a motion.
I think it's good we had someone up there.
I'll make a motion that Wayne be compensated for all meetings that he attends on our behalf. I just forgot the name of the...
Homeland Security.
Homeland Security, for Homeland Security.
Including the meeting...
Including the meeting of the 28th of March.
Any support for that?
No.
Okay. Moved and supported to compensate. Did you say Wayne Baumgartner or did you say Homeland Security Representative?
I said Wayne Baumgartner.
Okay, that's fine.
Is that all right?
Yes.
Or whoever is still as Homeland Security Representative.
We'll have to appoint someone and it'll just go along.
That's fine.
All right.
Okay, moved and supported. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Okay, moving on. Item D.
Give you a radio?
He's got four channels. He can listen to everything.
Yeah.
You're not spying on good people in Casco, are you?
Then he goes to town, there's a great big fire.
It's good.
He left his radio hall.
Well, I knew something was gonna burn down while I was going. You gotta have that radio with you at all times, you know.
There you go.
Okay, moving on. Item D. Septic Field Discussion. I put this on the agenda because I need some direction. Do you want to do something or not? Couple of years ago, I got a PERC test. I got some rough estimates on the cost. I think it's something that really needs to be looked at. I anticipate the payback, it could be less, five to six years. We had a problem there a couple of months ago where the sump pump died and it evolved into filling the tanks, which cost us almost $400 bucks to pump out. So, I would like to get firm prices and get some options. I think we already have, I think there's an option we could do away with the pump in the basement. I think that's viable.
We have enough space for, on a subject field?
Yep, yeah, that's all done.
Where would it be?
The subject field starts at the sidewalk, runs 20 feet wide, goes between the flag and the township sign, and is 60 feet long.
So, it's not gonna affect any of the parking area?
Nope. And the grade, finished grade should be about where it is now.
We should do it.
So...
We direct the supervisor to get pricing and, for going ahead with putting a field in.
So, I have to look at some options that we didn't look at two years ago. There may be a better, it may be more cost effective.
You bring it to the board.
Oh, yeah. Do nothing without approval.
You gonna check out wireless toilets, like the one guy in Ridgeway Highway?
Don't do that.
But it may be cheaper to put in a new, even though our tanks are new, to put in a new tank. Because if we use these tanks, we have to put a lift pump in, which is about $1,000 bucks. And every time it breaks, you would spend a ton more money. So, I have to look in if that's a possibility. There's also a possibility of doing away with the pump in the basement. Because if that breaks, you're gonna be looking at $1,600, $1,800. And it's getting old. So, I want to look at all our options, see what the cost is, and go back with the recommendation.
Sounds good.
Okay, so we had a motion in support to get some prices. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda is payment of the bills.
I make a motion that we pay the bills.
I second the motion.
Moved and supported to pay the bills. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Me, yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colleen?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to citizens' comments. What's cooking at NEMC, Mr. Baumgartner?
Same old, same old.
Yes.
For sure.
Well...
Because the first time, I know we thought we did, but we didn't.
Well, they called me the day they were changing them to verify, but I don't get Comcast, so I don't...
But this was the second time around.
Yeah, I know, but the guy that actually does it was on the phone that day, so. I'm assuming they're changed. Planning Commission update?
Blah blah.
Coming Tuesday.
Come Tuesday.
Or you're just full of information.
Who's in the business? What is this with Richmond Auto Auction?
Yeah, we have a couple gentlemen who owned a business in Columbus Township and they're looking to purchase the auto auction.
Oh, they already did.
Already did.
Or John Lass...
It's a done deal.
John Lass sold.
Yeah.
Jeremy's bought.
Yeah, they gotta get approved for what they're wanting to do.
Well, they can, they can continue the auto auction and car sales, but they have to come back for special avenues to repair cars. So, they're in that process right now. Nothing else? Homeland Security, come on, we're gonna pay you now. We want a report.
Yeah, that, we're all safe.
You got your radio? You got your radio with you?
Heck, no.
Boy, you're lucky we voted to raise it.
Yeah, I'll bring it tomorrow. I know it's gonna do it. Road tours, so.
Road tours tomorrow morning, 10 o'clock.
And we're going to CHAPS, just let Bill know.
We're gonna vote. I wanna go to your bar, but they wanna go to CHAPS.
No, I don't want Christmas time.
I don't want to.
What do ladies wanna do?
Majority rules. We gotta ace the hole out of it.
No, that don't work.
What is the hole?
Wait.
Why are you coming on the road tour?
So, we need to vote to go to the bar.
Oh, that's a stack of that, huh? Okay.
Okay.
Well, that's only you and him also.
No, I've got Mike, too.
Mike, no.
Okay, one other item in front of you. I have an invitation to the yearly Homeland Security Emergency Management Breakfast, which is gonna be held May the 9th at the Four Lakes Golf Club. We just got this in, so I didn't bother changing the agenda for the meeting. If you want to go, there's your agenda. It's a very good event. They also have, they also have golf. If you want to play some golf, they have this... If you want to play some golf, they have this too. And...
Much different.
But it's a good breakfast.
Do they pay for that?
You pay for the golf. Breakfast is free.
Breakfast is free.
Yep.
Okay, I put your ticket in.
Who's the speaker? I see the speech, I see the theme of this year's breakfast is the Sandy Hook Response and Recovery. That's a good topic.
Would you say the tickets were?
No, I was going to mention the tickets to the breakfast Friday.
Oh.
That comedian questioned who the speaker was, I do not know. I'm sure they're on the website somewhere. I had your tickets on the table for the breakfast Friday. I believe 7 o'clock is registration, 7:30 to eat.
Do you have the speech delivered?
I don't know what they're doing, no. Because it says guest speaker on there for Mr. Hackle, so.
Nobody else is going to get a shot, so.
So I, maybe I'll, I just sit there and relax.
I just liked that last year when that guy from City Richmond says, oh, a lot of people think we're not, but a bunch of farmers up here. And Bill's like, the next speaker, the speaker actually goes, you know, I'm Bill Ruhman, but I am a farmer. And you're there.
Rusty was on Frank Beckman's morning. Yes, he was. I heard him.
Who was he talking about?
Well, he was, he was talking about the unfortunate gentleman who was beaten to a pulp in Detroit because Rusty was just wondering if this is the latest new epidemic of, you know, kids having nothing better to do because when he was in Chicago last weekend, kids were doing the same thing, stepping off backwards of the curb. What, and what happened when the kid stepped off the curb in Chicago, the kid didn't get hit, but the guy stopped abruptly and he got hit in the back by another.
It's a game they play. It's a game play. See how, how long you can keep, how close you can come to a, sticking your foot out without being hit by the car.
Well, apparently that didn't work in Detroit. Too bad.
But I like how the community around there were trying to find out, help.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah.
This is about time.
Yeah, so you have a lot of good citizens helping.
That nurse that stopped and helped us, both of them.
Saved his life, if he lived.
Yeah.
And there's people in the neighborhood that were in the process of finding out who those kids were.
Well, yeah, you know, and that's a...
500,000 dollars, you know.
Oh, well.
Okay, anybody else have anything? Clear? Comments? Then we are to adjourn.
I make move to adjourn, support?
Moved and supported to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stand here.
Yeah, I hope someone counts as a young man over there in my city.